To the special meeting this Tuesday evening, February 16th. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Gothel's. Okay, we'll keep an eye out for him. Councilmember Pappen?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez?
Here. Thank you.
Record, please.
Are we all set?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, due to health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed in to the call via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If you're calling in via phone, please press star nine to raise your hand when called upon. And, and when you are called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment period for that specific item. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the citywide traffic management update. And we have a presentation by Bethany Lopez. All yours.
Good evening, council. Um, Craig, if I could ask you to go ahead and share? If you could, uh, thank you. All right. Um, thank you again for having us. Uh, we're here providing, um, our second quarterly update on the citywide traffic management update. Um, tonight, uh, we have Sergeant Craig Column who's going to be presenting um, on our traffic map update and then Samantha Weigel will be presenting on our communications. Um, if you can go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, um, I'm going to provide a quick update on the traffic data analysis. Um, we discussed this at our last meeting. Um, Craig Column will be presenting the traffic data map. And Samantha Weigel will be presenting on the communications, specifically the San Mateo Educational Campaign. Next slide. Uh, and next slide. Um, so as we mentioned, uh, we discussed in November of last year. We had presented, uh, traffic data from 2017 to 2019. Um, this data was using an external data source. Um, and so we had discussed at that meeting and gotten confirmation to pursue using internal and earn it our own data, which is internal data source. Um, what this does is provide additional data points, a larger data set for us to analyze. Um, and it will include, uh, it will include property damage collisions as well. So since that meeting, our staff have, um, have begun, um, doing the analysis that's required for us to be able to use this as the, uh, as the data set, um, which really involved mapping all of our collisions from 2017 through 2020. Um, they recently completed that effort. And so, uh, with that, um, our team is going to be starting the, uh, data analysis part of this and will be, um, presenting that information at the next quarter. So from here, I'm going to pass it on to Sergeant Craig Column. Craig, whenever you're ready, you can unmute yourself.
There we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. This is, uh, our, we're, all right. Um, there are several ways to find our, uh, traffic safety map. Easiest way is, uh, right here. GIS dot c samatero dot org. But there's other, two other ways. You can go through the Samatail Police webpage, uh, through departments, police on our new accountability page. And then it's data transparency and then, and then traffic collisions and that, that'll take us to, um, our traffic, traffic safety maps. And then the other route, um, is through the City of Samatail webpage, community parking and transit, and then it goes into our safe streets, um, our new, new safe streets, which they'll talk about later. When you click on the, uh, link, this is what you'll get. You'll get the, uh, screen here. And I'm going to, we're going to go through kind of a quick live demo of what it looks like and what it entails. So you come here and we've got injury, hit and run, DUI related, private property, and then a link to our safe streets program. All these are reportable collisions that we get, um, that we take through the city, um, either online or an officer goes out and, um, handles, it handles the investigation. Injury. So here's what, um, we have a heat map that starts it out and I did a, we got a date range finder here. So I just did a sample of, uh, the last approximately seven, seven and a half months from July 1st. When, um, all of this, uh, started, when we started talking about the data transparency and stuff, till, um, I think it was recently updated as soon, as, uh, early as last night. So this would be the heat map and I zoomed in, you can zoom in and out. But when you go out, it's, it's a little bit harder to see the neighborhood. So if you zoom in, you can see that each neighborhood is outlined. Uh, Samtail Park, the Heights, North Central, or I mean, Central Business District, North Central and, uh, all the way through the whole city. So I'm zooming in a little so you can get a little bit better aspect of what it looks like. So that'd be a heat map and I did the central business district, um, as kind of the, the center of this one. Uh, if you go to injury collisions, this will show you all the injury collisions in the last seven months that were reported to us. Um, and from here, click on that one, for example. Uh, this collision occurred at, on 10/28, 8:30 in the evening. Uh, it looked like one visible injury or one complaint of, a visible injury or complaint of pain or one in the same. So it's a combination of things. This was not a DUI related one. It was a red light violation. So, uh, just from guessing, someone ran a red light and hit another vehicle. You click on another one, it'll have pretty much the same information or similar information with different, um, causes. It'll tell you the cause. This was a pedestrian right of way violation at Third and Humboldt. Um, so that would be all of our injury ones. Then we go into hit and run. We have quite a few of those too, that, and those get reported online a lot. So the ones online won't have as much detail or information for us, but we still have, we still try and figure it out by what they said on, on the issues. Um, click on one of these, it'll tell you the time. Um, looks like when they did this one, it was unsafe turning movement. And it is a misdemeanor because it's a hit and run violation. Um, next one, we have DUI related collisions. Um, this is, this was in, uh, probably seven months around there. Um, again, it'll be very similar information. And it'll tell you when it was driving under the influence of, um, alcohol or drugs. And then, uh, uh, whether it was on private or property or not, because that's one of the few that will take on private property. If there is no injuries, we still handle those because a crime was involved. And then the last one, our private property collisions, which we don't get too many usually, like, like I said, they're, uh, either DUI or a hit and run type collision. Um, and then over here, we have the date range finder. So you can back here to injury. We go to this, we can shut off the date range and put all the, the, we have everything in 2020 and 2019 in here. So that's what that would bring up. And then when you filter it through, it brings it down. And then again, if you want to filter it through and zoom into a neighborhood and you can even filter it less. I mean, if I want to go to the last, let's say, three months. Sorry. Forgot to hit the button. Remember first. It'll show you that it filters it down even more. So that's, that's how that map is working. Here, sorry. So, uh, with that, we, we're, the, uh, we're going to go live, we're going to update, um, 17, 18 into there and we're, our data will go back as far as 2017. We've gone through it all. It's pretty much ready to be finalized and entered into the map. And that should be, uh, by the end of the month, we should have that up and running. So we'll have four years of data in the map. Um, for, for Public Works and for the public to sift through. Uh, in the future, we're going to have, uh, a little bit later, hopefully by spring, we'll have a, uh, another toggle that'll be pedestrian bicycle location. Um, and then age demographic location, uh, map. That one's a little more, uh, uh, we're still trying to, there's so many databases we got to go through and try and merge to get that, uh, up. We're, we're working on that. That'll be after we get the pedestrian and then, uh, as well, we're going to have a new citation location map, which will have, um, a map, same, uh, map overlay with all the citations that were issued through the city, um, and, uh, from the officers and, uh, motorcycle officers as well. And with that, I'll turn over to Communications.
Great. Thanks, Sergeant Column. Um, this is Samantha Weigel, the Cities Communications Manager. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and City Council members. So tonight I'm here to talk about the recently launched Safe Streets San Mateo Educational Campaign. Hope you can, perfect, thanks. Um, which we just launched in, in mid-January and it did include a new webpage, which is found at www dot city of samatero dot org backslash Safe Streets San Mateo. Um, you can find it from the homepage of our website under the spotlight section, and it also includes a link to the wonderful new traffic map um, that you just saw. Next slide, please. So our overarching theme in this campaign is really that we strongly believe that managing traffic and improving safety needs a multi-pronged approach. And that includes actions that the city is taking, such as with traffic enforcement and our engineering improvements, as well as actions that the public can take while traversing our streets. So that's whether they're driving or bicycling or, or on foot. And, um, we're going to be sharing a variety of different sort of safety tips, as well as information, um, about the data that we're seeing on our streets. And we're going to be sharing these messages throughout our various communication channels. So just a couple of quick highlights. Since we launched this revamped campaign, we've had over 700 visits to the new webpage and over a thousand visits to the traffic map. And we've also had thousands of impressions on our social media posts and it's been, um, relatively well received with some great support from our, from our public. So we'll be sharing these messages that are again inspired by the data that we're seeing, um, from both our police and public works teams and what they're reviewing. So for example, uh, if we know there are certain problem areas in the cities, such as around downtown or specific demographic groups, such as seniors or school age children, that information will help inform the type of messaging and graphics that we produce. And then our initial plan, um, is to focus on various modes seasonally and then we'll be adjusting the campaign um, as needed and based on what we see. Next slide, please. So these are a few examples of the materials and communication channels that we're going to be using. So the first is, is social media and digital communications. We know it's a really quick, effective tool to reach our audiences um, and at a very low cost. Uh, and these are some of the graphics and the content that we're sharing on our site, such as Facebook and Twitter. Uh, and then of course we'll be sharing at our e-news and, and our website as well. And then again, we're really, we're, we're not only focusing the messaging on what we're seeing, um, but we're also focusing like graphics on those we're trying to reach. So using visuals that our audience can relate to and hopefully see themselves in. And then of course, we know that not everyone is on social media. And so that's where some of our other print and sort of street level messaging comes in. We will be leveraging some of our changeable message signs to communicate key safety messages uh, in areas where, uh, PD or PW are seeing a need and those can, uh, move around on a rotating basis. And we're also discussing some print communications that we can produce, uh, such as posters that we're thinking about printing and providing to local businesses and asking them to be hung around downtown. So again, really trying to meet people where they are in the community and targeting to areas where we see, um, we, we have a need to do some enhanced safety messaging. And then we're also talking about doing some postcards or mailers with evergreen safety messaging. And again, always linking back to sort of that main website and those core messages that we're trying to communicate to our community. And then we'll, oh, sorry, went back. We'll also, uh, look to various community partners to help share our messaging, such as, uh, partner with our local schools or senior centers, or again, some of our, our downtown business owners or various business owners throughout the city. And again, we really do want to promote, um, education and emphasize that it's the responsibility of each individual to promote safety. And then of course, we also want to tell the story of what the city is doing to address traffic and safety, which is a lot. So messaging, particularly on, um, our digital platforms will include street infrastructure, safety improvements that we're making, um, police traffic enforcement efforts and other things that the city does to enhance safety. And then I really just want to give a shout out to our communication staff and our police and public works department for their thoughtful work on the Safe Streets San Mateo campaign. Um, and then we're hoping that you, our, our city council members, as well as our community members can help us with this by, uh, amplifying this messaging as we continue, um, with the campaign. And then I think we can go on just to the last slide, Craig. Thank you. And just to recap on next steps, so staff does plan on returning to council quarterly with updates. And we will present the further data, uh, the traffic data at the next meeting. We'll continue to expand upon the interactive traffic data maps. And then we'll also continue our educational campaign. So with that, we are happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much for all those presentations. Um, do we have any questions, um, by any council members? And if you could use your virtual, because there's a lot of stuff on the screen. Um, I'm not seeing any hands right now. Um, I, I question I had, uh, for Sergeant Column. Uh, and that is, uh, when you're, when you're creating this map, um, are, is SMPD, uh, able to use these, this map, uh, to more effectively policing and focus resources? Or is it, or is this effort primarily seen, uh, to help improve transparency, uh, for the public? I mean, I'm sure it's a little bit of both, but I was just curious to what extent your department is using this data.
Yeah, that, that is our plan. As we get more data, we can focus in on the, neighborhoods or the streets or intersections that have, um, issues at hand. And, uh, we've already had some officers, um, as you're aware, we have a new, um, traffic model and each officer is assigned an area and they take it upon themselves. And a couple of them have already looked at their areas, seen that they have some issues and gone out and done some enforcement. So we're, we're doing it. Um, we already starting to do it with the limited data that's in there. And as it grows, um, it'll grow as well with the officers.
Great, thank you. And I'm still not seeing any other questions from our, uh, city council members. So I have one more question. Um, and that is, uh, do we have any data on approximately what percentage of collisions are not reported?
Unfortunately, no, because, um, we, I, we wouldn't really know, um, if it occurred, like if two people bump into each other and they exchange information, we're not going to really be aware of that. Um, we do have some where they call in, we advise them to exchange. So we have limited information, but we, I, I really couldn't. I wouldn't want to put a ball, a number out there as a ballpark.
I guess, I guess I was looking at more just a higher level. Was there any kind of like overall statistics that say, you know, maybe 25% of collisions don't go unreported or something like that? I wouldn't expect, um, you guys didn't, to know about ones that aren't reported.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, off the top of my head, I don't. I mean, I can do a little research and get back to you on that.
Okay. And we have a question from Deputy Ma, Deputy Mayor Bonilla. You're up.
There we go. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, um, uh, I'm looking at the map right now on my iPad and I'm wondering, I mean, I know that when you, I watched you just clicking on, you know, the dots there under the different headings and up came information. But I'm on my tablet here, nothing happens when I touch the dots. Did you guys test it for working with tablets, mobile devices?
Let me, you know, I, I, I would have to defer that maybe to Richie. I think Richie's on here and he was, he's the GIS map, uh, coordinator.
Okay.
Uh, Richie, do you have it?
I, I do. Um, yeah, the, uh, the framework that we're using, uh, is, uh, web-enabled, uh, and tablet and mobile-enabled. Um, I'd have to look into see, uh, uh, why that was happening. Uh, but, but I can definitely look at that. It, it should be mobile-enabled for sure.
Yeah, I just moved from all collisions to injury collisions. It's working on injury.
Okay, all, the all collisions, um, clicking is, is disabled because, uh, it is a heat map and it doesn't give you, uh, specific locations. Um, yeah, so that would be the reason for that.
Okay, now I'm on hit and run collisions and yeah, it pulled up some information.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, good. So this is a work in progress, I take it. It's being, uh, improved as we go along.
It is absolutely. And, and we, we definitely want feedback. Uh, if, if anybody finds any issues, um, we would definitely like to know it and we will fix it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I have a, two questions. One is, um, how is, how is the data being pulled? Like, is it, is it a very manual process or is it something that, um, that is easily exported and imported into the system? Like, I'm, I'm just curious if there's a kind of a heavy administrative lift to, to upkeep this and how, you know, if there might, if you feel like this is an efficient process long-term.
So for, uh, when we started it, just to get caught up, it was pretty heavy. We had, uh, uh, took us, uh, several months, a lot of man-hours to upload all the past data. While we were doing that, Richie and his crew were building a import, um, with our records on how to import it from our, our RIMS data. And from this point forward, as far as the collisions go, it is, uh, is fairly simple. It's not that much, um, manpower for the collision part. Once we get the bicycle, um, up, it's the same thing. I think it'll pull from that same database that they built. So that won't be too much. The, the next, the one that, and that's why it's a little bit, it's going to be a little delayed is the, um, uh, the, uh, age demographic one. Um, that one is, is taking some time and it's between records, us and Richie. And I believe, and Richie correctly, we're wrong. I think there's three databases that we're pulling for just to get age, because when we take a collision, the, the CHP reporter, the, we call it CHP 555 report, which is a state report, doesn't have age demographics in it. So then we have to go to our RIMS report and pull that, and then that marries it into so, into the, um, the, uh, map. So we're still trying to get the programming behind that and it's, it's above me on technicality. Uh, Richie, you might be able to explain a little more to clear it up.
I can. Yeah, uh, that's exactly right, Craig. Uh, it's pulling from different tables as we move into more complex, uh, visualizations of the data. Um, but in the end, uh, once we get everything squared away, it'll, it'll be an automated process. So, uh, we'll come up with a, a time probably every weekend or something and it'll, it'll automate the data from the RIMS database into the map. So it's not going to be, moving forward, it's not going to be a, um, as a manual process as it is right now.
That's great news. I'm, I'm glad to hear it. Um, my other question is, um, to Samantha, I was wondering if we're working with the neighborhood associations to notify them about, um, about the communications, um, uh, and education initiative that we're doing and like what, um, what, what are some of the points of contact that we're making with some known, um, you know, community hubs that, you know, that are active in the city?
Yeah, great question, Councilmember Lee. Um, so we do, you know, thankfully have some pretty close contacts with a number of the very active neighborhood groups. And we can absolutely continue to reach out to them directly and, and share this information and, and ask that they, um, distribute it amongst, amongst their members as well. For some of the neighborhood groups that aren't as active, um, we know that can be a little more of a challenge, but that's why we're really hoping that, um, some of the more not only targeted messaging, but also the citywide messaging and the perhaps print materials, we know will really be reaching people, um, at every household. But we can absolutely partner more closely, particularly if there are certain neighborhood groups, um, who, who want to see this increased messaging in their neighborhoods.
Is that all of your questions, Councilmember Lee?
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, Councilmember Pappen.
So, uh, I went on this and explored it myself before tonight, uh, when I first got the notice of it. And I thought it was really amazing. Um, I found it very, very interesting, um, especially the way the heat maps are working. Um, and I, I know you want questions, Mayor, um, but I, I will say, I, I really love the part about pedestrians being aware. Because really ultimately, we, we have the most control over ourselves. Um, but, um, my question is this, and it goes to Bethany. Are you anticipating from the public works perspective that you will use this data, um, to determine where we might do some traffic improvements? And if so, I got a follow-up question, and that is, are you going to be looking to perhaps the city council to set policy that will say, okay, if you have X number of collisions in this one area and it's, it's been that way over X period of time, we clearly have a problem. And likewise for the police as well. Um, is that where we're headed with the data? I mean, data's great and we're all interested in it, but I just want to know kind of how we're going to use it.
Sure, absolutely. Um, no, you're absolutely right. That I think the goal with looking at the data and one of the main reasons why we wanted this larger data set was to be able to identify, um, more location-specific information. Um, so then we can identify improvements, uh, be it, you know, enforcement improvements or educational improvements or actual physical, you know, engineering, uh, improvements, um, that we can implement to try to address those. So that is ultimately the goal. Um, and then regarding setting, um, setting thresholds, I think that's absolutely something that we can, we can look at. Uh, I know one of the things on our plate is to update our neighborhood traffic management program. Um, and in that, that may also provide an opportunity to set some of those thresholds for how we want to define, um, where specific improvements should be, uh, focused. Um, so, uh, absolutely. I think all of the, the data is, is driving us towards how we prioritize, um, and what those actual improvements are.
Okay, um, it looks like we have no more questions, so I would like to, and, uh, Madam Clerk, it looks like we have one hand raised at the moment.
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Diana, please go ahead and begin your comments.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Um, I first of all would like to thank the city council and this traffic thing. I think that it has helped with placing on Grant and, uh, Fourth Avenue, the, um, the piles along the street so that people can now cross the street. And we're not having direct traffic all the time going across Fourth Avenue. I'm more worried that what is going to happen when we're there finished working on the overpass, on Third and Fourth Avenue overpasses on 101, how this is going to impede the traffic? Because, um, going out, it will cause a backup situation into downtown. Now I'm talking about when everything gets back to normal. Okay? Um, I'm wondering how is that going to affect Fourth, Fifth, Third B Street? Okay? My other, uh, question is, is that since we've had the B Street, uh, closed off for restaurants, um, on the 23rd, I believe, of December, there was a carjacking and the people, I was at the post office on, um, South Ellsworth and Second. And the person stole the vehicle and continued all the way down Second and made a left into the neighborhood of North Central on South Fremont, down to Amflet. Um, and that's where they apprehended the person stealing the car. After that, about 20 days later, there was another car hijacking and they can, they continued down Second and Amflet. The, and then we had a third occurrence. This is, um, it's not unprecedented, uh, since about November. It's been happening more and more. And the other thing I'm worried about are the people who are eating on Second in those, in those, um, places to eat on the street. The, the traffic goes one and the other way. We're still having problems with Ubers making U-hand, uh, U-turns on Second Avenue, particularly down by Kingfish used to be, which is now Blue Coffee in front of the parking lot. And it amazes me because the police station is one block away. Can, um, the, the police tell me a little bit about what you're doing to help Second Avenue and B Street and all those people who are eating on those streets, please?
Thank you. Um, and our next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Hi, uh, good to see everybody tonight. Just wanted to take a moment to thank Ms. Weigel, Ms. Lopez and Sergeant Column for putting this information together and bringing it forward and for the city council to, uh, agendize it. It's very important to lower greenhouse gases to make people feel very safe about walking. It's very important to lower greenhouse gases, to make people feel very safe about walking and biking. If you're afraid to walk to the train or feel unsafe on the train, you're likely gonna stay in your car. The neighborhood I live in is one of the lighter collision areas on the east side over by Bridge Point. Uh, the only problems we've had is right-hand turn red light runners, which has almost nailed me a couple of times. But, uh, uh, we're very appreciative of the work the city's doing to try to keep the accident rate down and to make it safe for people to walk and to bike. So thank you very much for everything you do. I appreciate it.
I see no other speakers.
Hey, thank you. So I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to our city council. And I'd first like to, um, give Sergeant Cullen, uh, an opportunity to respond to, I believe that caller, or the, the speaker was Diana. In which she was talking about safety in second half.
Yes, um, we do have a, uh, one of my traffic officers is assigned to downtown and he has been, uh, hitting those areas. I will bring that to his attention, that specifically Second Avenue, to, to kind of watch out for violators down there. But, uh, overall, um, we try and get them all around there. As far as the other, um, stuff she brought up, I'm, I'm unaware of those cases, so I don't have a, any, uh, response to that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other council members have any questions or, or further comments? Uh, right, I do. I, I just wanted to thank all three of you, uh, presenters for, for presenting, uh, what you have so far. Um, I think it's pretty amazing how much, uh, progress that we've made in just a couple of months in terms of just improving our overall transparency as a, as a, as a city and as, and various departments. I think it's, um, I think it's, it's, it's a great thing for not only the public and the neighborhoods, but also each, uh, individual department that's trying to work together to coordinate all these efforts that, that aren't standing alone by anything. So those are my, my final comments. And we have, uh, Councilmember Lee, I saw your hand up first.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure to applaud the efforts of our city staff. Uh, this is an, a really excellent example of how the city can marry our data and our policy initiatives and focus our resources that, in a way that will really make our streets safer through public education and the police department's enforcement efforts and, and the public works engineering. And so this is really a culmination of, um, a great collaboration and, and I think, you know, really good policy at work. So I'm very excited to see where this goes.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Uh, Deputy Mayor Bonilla. You're muted. You're on mute.
Guess I'm too old to keep it off mute. Listen, I wanted to say thank you to the staff because this is something that, um, for years now, we've been looking at traffic safety in different neighborhoods and, and throughout the city as a whole. And one of the missing links has always been that data, right? So this is a great step forward. The public will really appreciate this. It will help all of us to understand. And to the point that Richard Hedges made, if it's safe to bicycle from where you live to the train and you don't feel like you have to take a car, the train now has cars that you can put your bicycle in and get to whatever your destination is. It will cut greenhouse gas emissions. It will encourage more walking. Um, I think it's just a great, uh, safety improvement overall. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, any other final comments? Okay, thank you very much, uh, city staff. Am I on mute? No, good, okay. Um, we're gonna move on to closed session next. There's two more items. Uh, conference with legal counsel, existing lit, uh, litigation. And before we move to closed session, I just want to give the public an opportunity to provide comment. If, if you so wish, please raise your hand now. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Mister Mayor, I see no hands raised either.
Okay, so I'm gonna close public comment and we're gonna see each other, uh, on the closed session teams. Uh, so I'll see you there.